I'll order this regularly scheduled meeting at the Kill Devil Hills Board of Commissioners. So great to see so many smiling faces in the audience. Thank you so much for coming. If you would, please stand and join me for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the world which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As we do at the beginning of each meeting, I'll ask you to join me for a moment of silence and think of those who are having a tough time today. Thanks so much. Thank you. All right. It's been a while since we had a full house. Good to see everybody. Board, we have an agenda before you.
We comment and approve the move to approve the agenda.
Got a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any further discussion? There are none. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, aye. Motion carries. We have an agenda. First item on our agenda is public comment. For those who may not be familiar, we do public comment twice here in Kill Devil Hills. Once at the beginning of the meeting. Again, at the end of the meeting, you can speak on any subject that you like. We ask you to keep it to three minutes, five minutes for a group, and please identify yourself by name and where you live, or your address, your KPH, or wherever you live from. We have three names on the list to start, and then we could take folks from the audience if anybody else would like to join in. The first one is Sam Angelo, I believe it is.
Hi, Matt.
How's it going?
It's going well. Hi, everyone. My name's Sam Angelo. I live in Kill Devil Hills. My address is on Avalon Drive. I'm not going to shout it out to everyone, but that's all right. I guess probably the reason most people are here is because of the disc golf course. And I'm just not sure if I'm going to be able to stay until the end of the meeting, so I wanted to get this out of the way now. I know that there is going to be a report on it at the beginning of the meeting. First thing is, although there are a lot of people here, you know, a lot of people who play disc golf, and if you're back at the disc golf course, are, you know, are service workers. They work, you know, they don't necessarily get off at five or six. So take this as, you know, not the entire representation of disc golfers in town. There's definitely a lot of us. And yeah, I play a lot, and I don't even know half these people, so. And the second thing I want to say is, I guess I understand that the town and the Outer Banks as a whole is kind of caught in between a rock and a hard place when it comes to housing. It's definitely an issue here. But I think it's important to carefully consider what we're going to give up, and, you know, is it going to solve the problem? And along those lines, like, the disc golf course is almost singularly unique on the Outer Banks as a place other than the beach where people gather for free. There's definitely other facilities on that bomb track that I think people make good use of, but the disc golf course is an important place in the community for people to come together. So before, I guess, we move forward on, you know, developing it, I just would like that to be considered. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next name on my list is Chris. Might be Morgan? Morgan? Go let us know how to pronounce that.
Yeah, Morgan.
Morgan?
Yeah. Chris Morgan, currently residing in Powell's Point. If you can tell, I'm not from here. My family just moved from Lexington, Kentucky. One of the things I was most excited about when moving to the Outer Banks, where my wife has a friend base, but I don't, was the disc golf course. Leaving Lexington, Lexington is in a similar position as the Outer Banks in the sense that there's a limited amount of land for development for housing. Lexington, Kentucky is the horse capital of the world, so all the surrounding metro area is protected by horse law. So the only thing you can do to help bring people into the community is do infill development. And just this past year, throughout the pandemic and the growth of disc golf, our city, although stressed with land constraints, saw the opportunity to bring in extra tourism and to provide really a low barrier to entry sport across all economic, you know, statuses. Disc golf literally is almost free to play, and the people that play disc golf maintain the courses. They care a lot about that. And the city decided, with that in mind, to put a million and a half dollars into 36 acres of development despite having no land to develop. So I just think that, you know, I'm familiar with the housing situation here, although I only literally lived here a week. We've vacationed here literally three times probably since the last 10 years. But to hear on the beach yesterday that you all were considering, you know, potentially redeveloping or part, if not all, of the disc golf course is really disappointing. So.
Thank you. Name I have is Larissa York.
Hello. I'm Larissa York. I live on Argus Road, Kill Devil Hills. I have five kids, and we all use the disc golf course. But that's not why I'm here, because I'm here because I wanted to show you this. This is the official First Flight Middle School Disc Golf Team Shirt. Every year, my youngest child is autistic, and every year, Ms. Hannan puts together a disc golf team, and they walk over from the middle school. And they're, this is so thrilling to them. It's so, I can't even talk about it. It's so special to them. I don't want to lose that. I don't want it to go away. It's so special. We've done other things besides disc golf. You know, they have the Halloween thing over there. We all went over and we did trick-or-treating on the disc golf course. I mean, it was amazing. So I would just respectfully like to ask that you do not get rid of the disc golf course. Thank you.
Three names I had. Like I said, we've got time now. If anybody else would like to speak, we also have one more chance to speak at the end of the meeting. Please.
Matt Walker, 439 West Walker Street. I'll make it real quick. Cheers up, disc golfers for coming out. Best of ads. I mean, my take is pretty much like I said in the email, I just think this is a huge issue to be deciding in July and August, when a lot of people don't have time to consider it or come out. And then people who called me concerned about this could be here tonight. I just think it's a perfect example, because they have to work. Why this, I don't know the details, none of the real deep. It's a big issue, but I think it could be chewed on at a later date if possible, before you pull the trigger on something this big.
Hello. My name's Clayton. I live in Collington. I am a member of the disc golf community and the certified tournament director for our region. I just wanted to reiterate, just like everyone else here that spoke so far, the disc golf course, it's important to the community. It gives a lot back. Some of these, well, matter of fact, all those people that just spoke, have no idea who they are. I'm out there five days a week. I'm out there during doubles on Sunday mornings. I run all the tournaments. I run the leagues. I haven't seen these people. That's how many people come and go through that course that we just don't know. But a couple of things. If you've read through the report, I think you've seen the numbers from the growth of the course. UDisc keeps track of rounds played at our course, and it's mostly out-of-town people. It's not residents. They use this course because they know the holes. They know where to go. There's been a 100% increase in rounds played at that course from 2019, 2020, and 2021. With 2021, there was over 5,500 rounds of disc golf played out there. And that's 90% of out-of-town people. Like I said, the residents don't use this because they know the course. The Outer Banks Visitors Bureau is a huge sponsor. They're our title sponsor for all the events we do out there. Our spring tournament, our fall tournament. We bring in 140 to 150 people to these tournaments twice a year. They're coming from as far south as Florida. They're coming from Pennsylvania, New Jersey, out to Tennessee. We get everyone from the East Coast. They come here because they love this course. They don't come here for the money that's involved. They come here for this course. The last two years, we've had the winningest player in the history of disc golf. He holds the title for the most wins in PDGA history. He comes to this course because he loves this course. There's, I'm sorry. This isn't usually what I do, speaking in front of people, but I just wanted to reiterate how many people use it, how much it means to everyone, how much it means to the school. I've seen the middle school come out there, and they have a great time. We have donated hundreds of dollars in discs to the Manio High School Disc Golf Club, First Flight Disc Golf Club. We've given some to the middle school gym class. Anytime we have leftovers, we donate those discs to get more kids out there. We've, there are high school kids that travel for disc golf. There is two of them that travel the country, sponsored players, who make money, who make, not a living, who make money at this. There's one in Missouri right now. He's on his way back. He just played a huge tournament that was on TV. He played well enough. He brought home money from that tournament. It's been a lot, and I just don't want to see it go anywhere. A couple of things I wanted to touch on as well was Kill Doves. They're also a huge sponsor. They have no problem giving us discs for every tournament we do. I won't share their sales numbers with you specifically. I don't know if they want that information out. But if you go in there now, the entire front of the store is disc golf merchandise. It was whispered to me from an employee there that they sell more disc golf merchandise than they do electrical and plumbing. I want you to let that sink in. That is one of the oldest hardware stores on this beach. They sell more disc golf merchandise than electrical and plumbing guys. That's how big it is. Anyway, we spoke with the mayor back on July 3, and he mentioned the only answer he could give me about why this was the best place for the housing is because it was the most efficient. I take that as being the easiest and the cheapest route, and I hope that's not why the town wants to make this decision, because it's easiest to put it all in one location. We hear that there are multiple locations that the town may own, that they can, that they've looked at, and I just think it'd be a better use, we do need the housing, yes, sprinkle these around, not to have all the burden in one location behind the school, traffic in and out of the school zone. I just think that's a bad idea. Sorry, I'm over my time, I'm sure, but thanks. Thanks, Jeff. Thank you.
Hey, my name's Bob Sanders. I live in Nagseth. Can't add a lot to what's already been said, but what I can say is I think the Logans had a great vision when they started this, and the town really helped us out. And Daryl and I were the first ones to go back there, and when we first went back there, I mean, you couldn't see from me to where you guys were sitting. And we cleared out all the vines and all the brush. We chopped down what we needed. We saved every oak tree. We built a course around all the oak trees. We built a course around the best wildlife that's back there. And, I mean, it went from a place that was never used to a place where you can't find a parking spot on any given day at any given time. And it's just a huge asset to this community. I see it as a gym to Kill Devil Hills. I see it as a place, destination, where vacationers come. And I was talking to a young man when I came in here tonight, and he's like, you know, there's nothing else for us guys to do on the Outer Banks. I mean, we've lost, over the years, we've lost everything that, you know, that's free to do, that's fun to do, that, you know, he's like, all that's left out is to go out at night, and I don't want to do that every night. So, you know, I look for stuff to do, so. And it's just a big community draw. I mean, I've made friends with people that, 14-year-olds, 15-year-olds. I've talked to them all the time, played rounds with them and everything, so. It's just, it's a unique space, and it's just a beautiful part of the Outer Banks and Kill Devil Hills. Thank you.
Good evening. Thanks for allowing me to speak here. I'm going to touch base. We already know what the big things are, and we've hit on a lot of those things. But for me, recently, this past airport's retired after 29 years and a couple of different branches of the armed forces, and, you know, I've counted a lot of different stuff. I run the doves out here for our clubs and heavily involved in a lot of the club stuff that goes on, and I get to see a lot of the people that come out here. And everybody's battling something, all right? I mean, all the locals that live down here, we battle different things, you know, but we get out there, you know, we got a couple hours to, you know, kind of leave it in the parking lot, get with your friends, go out and have some fun. It's kind of a joke with a lot of the people that we are out there with regularly, because they're like, you're out there every day. I'm like, I'm out there every day because it keeps me mentally good, man. You know, like, being out there, you know, kind of leaving all the, you know, we all got mortgages, we all got kids, we all got this, we all got that, you know, I mean. So to lose this property right here would be devastating, you know, in many aspects, not just for the ones that, you know, adjust to traffic, the this, the that. I live in Bermuda Bay as well, and there, those two Somerset apartments are going up in my backyard. The rest of that land back there is supposed to be developed as well. I know that in the Hamilton Cave development thing that is going to be done, which is going to add a tremendous amount of traffic back in this area anyways, not to, you know, say, hey, you know, let's put 400 units here and 800 more cars traveling through our schools where all of our kids go, you know. I just think that, you know, we need to, you know, there's many more positive reasons to keep it than to get rid of it. Thank you very much for talking to us.
My name's Mark Kilburn. Okay, yeah, that'll be you all right. Thanks very much.
My name is Carol Stern, and I live in Southern Schultz, Illinois. I've only been disc golfing for a few years. I lost my husband. I got depressed. COVID happened. My son said, hey, let's go try this. I was terrible at it, but everyone out here is more like a family than just strangers. They all want everybody just to have fun. I go out there five days a week now. I've lost 40 pounds. I love this. I know where all the trees are. Sometimes they move. You know what I'm saying? It's, you meet so many out-of-towners there, children playing with the butterflies, mothers taking pictures of the kids catching the butterflies. It's not just a course. Everyone says, when my son and I are out there, our friends are out there, and we talk to people, there's no fights, there's no anger, there's no politics. There's light at its best, and that's what this course means to all of us. And I'd really like you to consider that before you make a decision. Thank you.
My name's Bill Ernst. I live in Point Harbor. Been playing disc golf a while, and the idea that we could build a course here six years ago was amazing. I believe I was one of the first people by to come up with $500 to sponsor a bench. Now, one thing no one's talked about is the amount of money that has been put into this club, the amount of man-hours used to build this place. At no point do I remember, now contracts, maybe not my strong suit, but I know I would not have signed a contract that said $500 to support this course, but it's only good for five years. That's all I got to say. Thank you.
Hey, good afternoon. Evening. My name's Daryl Davies. I have a lot to do with, I think, the disc golf course and different facets. The contract did say three years, but while I'm up here, I'll go ahead and ask, I'd love for us, I'd love for the Commissioners to vote on allowing us to renew our contracts, so we can generate new income, so we can go back and keep updating the course. So that was, I think, one of the first things asked for before the housing came up. Excuse my out of breath. After COVID, I'm still fit, getting residuals. To me, this is huge. I built this with Bob and a bunch of volunteers over time. Something was kind of like, build it and they'll come, because no one really knew what it was. So trying to convince somebody it was a great idea at the time, and they're like, you can die from this if you get hit with one of these? What? That question came up. Yeah, you could die if you get hit and have the disc. I'm sorry. But it's just a thing, when we built it, all of a sudden, it came out of woodworks. People are coming from everywhere, all across, not only the United States, but the world have come here. They know about disc golf. When I got back from Germany, I took my disc with me to Germany to play. They got courses there. So, I mean, this isn't international sports. It's really big. There is a number that would be interesting to get on, how much revenue does this generate for the town, because we do it for everything else. We do it for our concerts we put on. We do it for surfree. You're trying to figure out how many heads come into the farmer's market. You've gone on Thursdays now. So this does bring in a lot of people. I had the DOT for every year, they'd been doing a traffic study for me at the same time of year. And I think we're outpacing the number of cars that go to aviation park. So if you think that's a lot of people in aviation park, we do more cars than they do. That's just cars. They're a kind of cars. And our parking lot's full all the time. It's just disgusting. It's just what it is. People really love it. And I think it'd be a real tragedy to, if you have a beautiful town, I keep hearing, I don't want it to be a Virginia beach or Myrtle beach, but when people come here, they're like, this is worse than Myrtle beach because you don't have the infrastructure. We do need affordable houses. I build affordable houses here. I'd like to ask the town to tell us where they went. I pulled them. Where'd they go? Because the deed notes restrictions did not keep them, so I want to hear about, will you just need notes to help keep this under control? We lost them all, as I said. So, I don't know. I just think to have this, it's an amenity for the town. We pay a lot of taxes here. We work our butts off here just to live here. We got people that come here and they enjoy this place. We want them to keep enjoying the place. But for the people that live here, this is free to do. There's not much else you can do around here that's free. It covers from your youngest kids to your oldest adults here. It doesn't matter if you're male or female, whatever you want to be called. It just attracts a lot of people. And you've never had an incident back there that I know of. Never had to call the police back there for anything. People, I don't know, the town doesn't really have to take care of it back there. You do a great job. So it's probably one of the least expensive assets the town manages. But it gets the biggest bang for the buck out of it. So when you're looking at this, I want everyone to really pay attention, do we need affordable housing? Yes. Just because you can doesn't mean you have to. No. Do we have more and more ways to do this? Absolutely. We need to be looking at all the ways that we can do this. But if you have questions about building affordable houses in this community, I'm a professional here. I can give you direct answers on how it works, what you're looking for, what you shouldn't do, and I'd love to hear where our affordable houses that we did build go, because I think that'll start to tell people why I'm upset. Thank you.
My name is Travis Trumps. I live in Kill Devil Hills, over on Third Street. So I moved here from Colorado in 2020. Didn't know a single person, didn't know anybody. Just had my family out here. Since then, the only community I've known has been the disc golf community. I've made dozens of friends through that, friends who I hope to know over my lifetime that are not here. It's a great place. I'm there five, six days a week, like just about all of us in here are. It'd just be a shame to see it go. Like we've said over and over, there are other courses, other places. We have to drive about, what, 30, 40 minutes over to current, talk to play. If you do that on a Saturday or Sunday, like, we work during the week. You can't go do that. I'm not going to sit in traffic. It just doesn't make sense, and I understand we need housing. It sucks. It's an issue everyone's facing across America, but I just think there are better solutions to this than just taking away what this community's built and what it has. Thank you very much.
All right, I'm going to rewrite it because I'm nervous. Okay. Hi, my name is Katie Morgan. I live in Collington. I'm a mother of two small children, a business owner, an Outer Banks native, and an avid disc golfer. I'm here tonight to show my support to the Casey Logan Disc Golf Course. I did not get into disc golf until about six years ago. I started playing in downtown Denver when I lived there with my boyfriend. We decided to start a family and move back to the Outer Banks, and the disc golf course was one of the main reasons we bought our new house in Collington. The proximity of the course for our growing family was a main selling point. Our three-year-old son is obsessed with the sport, and we plan to get our six-month-old daughter involved as soon as she's born. Disc golf is a rapidly growing sport in the US. It's comparable to pickleball. People seek it out when looking for places to live and vacation. Our local disc golf Facebook page has visitor comments almost daily asking about meeting up with locals or other golfers on the site. And there are builders that even have advertisements on the radio enticing people to move here or visit here, with disc golf as one of the main selling points. On a popular disc golf scorekeeping website, which Clayton touched on, UDisc, our course has been reviewed over 1,898 times, which I printed, which I use my, y'all can have it, but they're all good reviews. We have a 4.3 rating out of 5. If there must be affordable housing built, can't we build around the course? The disc golf is an affordable recreational activity. It gives people a place to go and have a good structure to time, and there's not many options, like everybody else was saying, to do anything other than go out and grab a beer. There's not many free choices. So lastly, I'd just like to say, if you've never played, and you're going to be deciding if they did the course, I invite you to come out to a Sunday doubles and just meet the people and just try it out, because even if you can't play, I mean, we will take all of y'all and just let you see before you're destroying what's been built there. So, thank you.
Thank you. A few more seconds for the really shy people to work up the courage. I know it's hard to talk in front of a big, yes, ah, I got somebody. It is tough to talk in front of a big crowd, I know that.
My name's Dan Butcher. I live on Collington Island. Been here since 1985. We love disc golf, as you can tell. It's an inexpensive sport, and the age limit is from, I've seen them two years old throwing a disc to, well, I'm 65, but I've seen them out there at 80. And you see, you meet a lot of people out there that during the summer that are here on vacation with their families, and I've met people, well, let me show you around, you know, play around with them. Everybody loves it. It's basically a maritime forest. I've seen several species of snakes, several species of woodpeckers, deer. You know, it's just, there's so much that is natural that we've cleaned up, and we have our lanes and those things, but it's still just an all-natural place. And, I mean, you can be getting ready to throw, and yeah, there's a yellow-bellied water snake right there beside you eating a toad. I actually have a picture of it on my phone. Just different things like that, you know, we all do love it. Like you said, how many people have been here lately? You can tell that the community is really in support. The traffic, I can't imagine what the traffic would be like, coming in and out of there with the housing. As anyone here with children, you know how the traffic is right now. A young lady with the T-shirt. I've been out there before with the kids, and just a great experience for, you know, so I say, please, let's keep it. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll go ahead and go just in case I can't stay. My name's Amanda Hooper. I live on Collington Island, but I am a property owner in Kill Devil Hills. I want to bring back to what Matt Ingram had said about the fact that handling a question like this in August is difficult. I mean, nobody, I would not have known this was a thing if somebody had not picked up the phone and called me. the phone and called me and said, you need to pay attention to this. I want to first ask, is this the kind of housing that our community needs? I read your packet in 20 minutes. So let's be honest, I didn't really read it. Like, I skipped it very quickly. So what I'm seeing is two-bedroom apartments. And two-bedroom apartments does not seem to be the most sought-after appropriate housing for families in this area. Most families need at least three bedrooms or more. And is high-density apartment something that we are looking for? If you actually go back and read what Miss Sinclair desired in her request, high-density housing is not on the list. We do have a responsibility to provide healthy green space. And we have a responsibility to protect our water, our land, and our wildlife. The nuisance interactions with wildlife here in this area have increased exponentially. And opening up this corridor is only going to exacerbate that challenge. When I went through and reviewed what the stakeholders had said, there really wasn't a stakeholder who said, yes, this is going to keep Run Hill safe, this is going to be fine for our watershed, this is going to work for us. I think overwhelmingly, the answer was no. This is going to make our challenges even greater. But school capacity is a huge issue. I mean, first-line high school, is that what, 109%? Is that what I read in here? So opening up high-density housing in this area is going to cause upheaval in entire neighborhoods as you redistrict and shift people to mania. It's also going to limit the ability to expand this campus where it is. I think that's pretty much all I have to say. I really, really, really would like you guys to table this, and so your locals and people can come together and really put our minds to it and really understand it, because August isn't that time.
Going once, going twice. Thank you so much for, so many people taking the time to come in, making feelings to the board, we really appreciate it. And like I said, we have another opportunity for public comment at the end of the meeting. The next item on the agenda is, and I'll close public comment there until the end of the meeting. The next item is response to public comment, and I'll just start it real quick. Just wanted to start with some assumptions that I hear coming out. One, I think there's an assumption that we're going to make some sort of decision tonight. That is not the case. All we have done so far is, about a month ago, we asked staff to look into what were all the moving parts, because this isn't a perfect fit. This is zoned in a different way than it would need to be to be housing. It is a desirable spot, because there's $35 million that came to the county, and it's going to get spent somewhere to build some housing of some kind. It might be here, it might be exit, it'd be all over the county. And the efficiency that one gentleman mentioned has to do with the fact that, you know, when you build in one spot, we might be able to get more units, which would be solving the problem in a greater sense. You know, they say that we have maybe 1,200-unit shortage, just to have enough labor to do the things that we're already doing, without any new businesses, just to have enough staffing for everybody. The other thing is, it seems to be an assumption that it's the only option is to get rid of Disc Golf. I wanted to let you know that in case you hadn't read in previous coverage of this topic, that the very first thing that we all said when we were starting to discuss this was, rule number one, we can't lose Disc Golf. So from the very beginning, we were only considering any sort of possible idea after we kept Disc Golf, either in this site or on another site, but it's a non-starter for us. So I want to just alleviate all the folks that are fans, because we're big fans. We're big fans of Disc Golf. We love what it's become, we love the community that's come around it, and we love what we see here today. I know I speak for everybody when I say that. We do not want to lose Disc Golf. And we also appreciate the love and time and energy and sweat equity that's in this course, that everyone is really proud of. And that's stuff that money can't buy. So we realized that if we did find another place to put Disc Golf, we would want to put resources behind that, so that we could do it bigger and better and nicer, with more parking and maybe a bathroom and shade structure. We have some places that we've looked at for that. All of that is way down the road. We just are at the very beginning stages to see if anything is possible, maybe on that big scope, maybe in a smaller scope, maybe not possible at all. You know what? I'll be the first one to say, I don't mind being in the minority opinion. You know, I think of the public as wanting us to solve a housing crisis that we've been having and is growing for 20 years. It's critical. You know, we get to the point where you can't find a place to eat on Monday or Tuesday, because no one has enough staff to be open seven days like they used to. We're trying to solve that problem, we hear it all the time. At the same time, we're all about being Killable Hills, which is great for all sorts of things, you know, from soccer, pickleball, and tennis, to all the other resources that we have. And like I said, we love Disc Golf, and we don't want to lose that. So I just want to put those things in your ear. We're going to hear from staff about all those details that were mentioned. This is not the only challenge. There's, like you said, concerns about traffic, concerns about the animals and all that sort of thing. And I look at a top-tier, it's a piece of property that's worth a lot of money. Would we go and buy it and use this for it? Or what is its best use? We're just trying to steward the people's money. It's your money. What do we want to do with the assets that we have? And if it stays exactly as it is and comes other things down the road that are not housing, that's perfectly fine, too. So we just want to make sure that we're engaging the public, both, you know, all you guys, plus everyone else out there who has an opinion about housing. We want to hear from everybody. And also know that the, at the county level, the sort of timeframe that seemed to be sort pushing to go faster, I think a lot of those things have been alleviated, the language around it has changed, so there isn't a lot of pressure. This idea will stay on the table as a possibility in the minds of somebody somewhere until all that money is spent. Whether we come up with some way to participate in a way that will benefit everybody in Killable Hills is anybody's guess. But I really appreciate that you guys want to be engaged in the process, and I really appreciate Disc Golf in general. So I wanted to open it up to the other board members, have any comments about public comment?
I'm just really excited to see so many people here, you know, supporting the Disc Golf. I came across it by accident. I went out to a event at the Camp Salt, and it was about 7:00 o'clock at night. And when I was there, we were getting ready to leave, and I was, you know, locking up the gate and everything, and I looked there and said, what in the world are all those cars doing over there? And so I kind of got curious and inquired and found out that there were a lot of people over there that still played Disc Golf even later in the evening. Disc Golf, I've come to learn, Disc Golf has become a gem for Killable Hills. I do think there's a problem. I think we need to support it more. As I've said to the board, we need to put some infrastructure out there, we need to put some water, we need to put some restrooms, we need to put some parking. So, you know, we need to make some efforts to move in that direction, because it's become something that a lot of people love and a lot of people like. The stories tonight that we've heard in the T-shirt, that's all good stuff. That's what we want Killable Hills to be. So thank y'all very much for coming out and, you know, voicing your opinion, appreciate you being here. Bob, thank you so much. You and I have talked quite a few times.
Thank you.
And we appreciate y'all.
Thank you.
I'll echo.
No, that's okay.
My introduction to Disc Golf was taking my son to Camp Salt. I would go back there, I'd like, honestly, a lot of Camp Salters, all these cars everywhere, all these people running around, it was Disc Golf. And I didn't know much about it when the course first came to be, but it's sure been wonderful to see it grow and prosper, and really be an asset that we are proud of. And we've talked quite a bit about, you know, paving that road, so as not kick up so much dust for the school and surrounding housing, getting bathroom facilities back there as well. I just remember my son coming home from Camp Salt, sweaty as can be, having to hike to the bathroom, like the football stadium. So there's a lot of good things around Disc Golf in that space, and we hope you can really accent that in the future.
Just a couple, I was kind of taking notes as everyone's talking, so I just have a couple of things. First, just to echo kind of what Ben said, it wasn't, the timing was not our choice. I know a lot of people are really upset about the timing. The timing has to do with federal funding that came down, so just to reiterate that, I think that's really important for everybody to know, that it wasn't our, it was not us. We didn't decide when this timing happened, the federal money came down, the county got some of it, that's how it started. Someone else, I can't remember who, I really apologize, but someone else said that there are other town properties that are being considered, and the town doesn't have other town properties. So it might have been that that person meant county, other county properties, or other towns, other than ours, but I just wanted to clarify that as well. And then one more thing to clarify, and I think we could also, I'm sure this will come up later, but I also just wanted to point out, in case anyone leaves, that our job up here is to consider the zoning for this property. It's not to consider, like, everybody knows, I, I mean, you guys, a lot of you probably know, I was interested in Disc Golf 15 years ago, my husband started playing. It's no secret, I'll be very transparent, that my husband, I send him out the door every time he gets stressed out and I mean, or she tells me. So I'll be very transparent about that. But, so that being said, I just want to clarify for anyone in the public, for you all, for media, that our job is to, legally, our job is to decide the zoning on this property. It's not to decide whether it's going to become workforce housing. It's not to decide, it's to decide whether it will stay as government recreation, or whether it will go to something else. So I just want to clarify that, because I think that's really important for everybody out there.
Okay. Before I was commissioner, I was on the Bomb Track Committee with Darryl Davies. And, you know, we had a lot of requests from all the departments as to what they would, what they wanted to use this piece of land for. And certainly, Killable Hills may need that land in the future as it grows for services. But I think when we voted for Disc Golf back then, I don't even think Darryl himself knew, you know, what would become of Disc Golf on this bomb track. And it's super exciting to hear all the stories and to see the camaraderie of the community that's built around it. So I'm happy to be a part of that. The major consideration, I would like you to know, the major consideration, I think, when we were on the Bomb Track was that while there were other departments that wanted, you know, wanted a piece of that property, the fire department, police department, other things, you know, one of the major things was that the footprint of what we were putting down there on the Bomb Track was small. It wasn't going to really change the nature of the property too much, and it would keep it, keep its characteristics. So it was the, it was the idea of creating a recreational spot, benefit, benefiting the community, and then on top of that, also being a small footprint. So that if needed or if necessary, it would be able to be picked up and moved someday or potentially, you know, I mean, potentially moved around. So I think, I think what everybody needs to know is that we, as, I think, I just want to speak for everybody, we as commissioners and mayor, we are certainly really impressed with what the golf course has become. It's certainly, you know, exceeded my expectations, and I think even Darryl's expectations and the committee that was, that sat on this and voted for this. So, you know, the major thing is, we don't take any of that lightly if we're deciding to, you know, what to use this property for. There's so many other considerations, more than just Disc Golf, that go into it. But we definitely hear you, we definitely appreciate what it means to you. And that's part of our consideration for sure, as to what to do with this great piece of land that we have, you know. And bringing the community together is a, is a, we, there won't be pieces of land like this again, so we have to be very careful about how we use this land. If we believe it would solve a problem, that would be one thing, but we also need places like this for people to get together and gather. So thank you for your time. It's great to see such strong solid moves down here.
So to recap, we want to keep Disc Golf. Let's solve the housing problem if we can. So we're trying to keep that on the table as well. So I want to thank, again, from everybody up here, everybody for taking the time to come out, I hope to stick around for the rest of the meeting, hear what everybody has to say. Some would be boring, just warning you that upfront, that happens. But we want to engage you further in the future to see what else might be possible. Obviously, keeping it there is the number-one option. If folks are open to other ideas, there's some other pieces of property we can talk about, or other, where a Disc Golf course could be built that would never have housing on it, that's, you know, that would be super permanent. This has unique possibilities and opportunities, because like I said, the size of the lot, given that there are no big lots like that anywhere else privately or otherwise, eventually, all this money will be spent. It'll be somewhere in Killable Hills, it'll be somewhere in Kitty Hawk, those kids will all go to the school. We hope that we can keep the conversation going. I think that's Bob, Bob Cut. I could touch on every item that somebody brought up, they're all worthy discussion to have, and we're going to keep talking about it. Anything else? We'll move down the agenda here. Ongoing business, I think, in that category. Now we'll move on to new business. New business item number one is change of use to Killable Hills' down track. So those of you who took the time to read the report, it was lengthy, online, even more if you printed it out somehow. But I'll let staff go from here, however you guys like to summarize that for the folks that didn't get a chance to read it.
I'll start off, and then I think Meredith is going to add to it. As you all know, the board directed staff to the June 13 meeting to investigate the possibility of the town's 44-acre Bomb Track parcel for development of essential housing, including staff contacting stakeholders and discussing the potential option, with the goal of keeping the best interest of the town at forefront. As explained in Meredith's attached memorandum, staff contacted and interviewed various stakeholders regarding the property's potential change to a high-density multifamily residential category. Stakeholders included the National Park Service, State Park Service, Nature Conservancy, the Dare County Schools, the Dare County Sheriff, and the Casey Arlo in Disc Golf Course volunteer representatives. Internal stakeholders included all of our department heads and other staff members. We did see a presentation from Coastal Affordable LLC on the specific development concepts for this parcel. So those comments, your internal stakeholders' comments are based on that presentation. The, our community stakeholders have not seen any presentation, just to clarify that. The major areas of focus included concerns and focused concerns, the traffic, the environmental impacts, the loss of established recreation facilities on a uniquely situated property, compatibility with surrounding properties, the loss of the town's current operation and future operation opportunities, the inconsistency with the town's current land-use plan, the increased cost to the town, and the parcel's limited accessibility. As Meredith's memorandum indicates, any change to the property's status would require an amendment to the town's land-use plan and a rezoning of the property from its current government and institutional public zoning designation. And now I'll just ask Meredith to touch on some of the issues, specifically without, as you say, reading through all of this information. Good evening, everybody. First, I'll start, the report in your packet is comments that are focused on the land-use change and not a specific development. When considering a land-use classification change, a specific development should not be considered. So when speaking to community stakeholders, the questions were not directed at the development that was being presented to many, but to focus on the appropriateness of the land-use change. The town must separate this specific project and the change of use. For example, in this change you use to high-density multifamily, is it an appropriate development change that any developer should have in this location? Throughout both internal stakeholders and community stakeholder interview comments, there was never a question that long-term housing was not a major issue. There is acknowledgement by all parties that Dare County is currently experiencing a housing crisis. However, there was also serious concerns about changing the land use on this particular parcel to high-density residential. The concerns include major environmental impacts, loss of existing town facilities, loss of future town uses, inconsistency with the adopted land-use plan, safety- future town uses, inconsistency with the adopted land use plan, safety concerns for both traffic and adjacent users, and the significant impacts on the first flight high school, or first light school campuses. Um, I can go through a brief bullet point list of, a few of each of those topics, if you'd like, or if you're comfortable with your report and you don't need me to, I won't. Um, so, I leave that to the board. Would you like me to?
I think now's the time to really educate the public.
Okay.
I agree.
So, keep on going, right?
Keep on going. We're all here.
Some of the environmental impacts include, the site is of 44 acres, of which 18 acres of it are, are 404 wetlands, which could be lost with high-density development. There's also several burnout ponds on the track. It will affect the water quality and stormwater management, as well as damage to ecosystem in this area. Adjacent estuary waters are high-quality and primary nursery. Intensive development will harm these waters and fisheries. Development of this parcel would disrupt the nat, disrupt the natural wildlife quarter that extends from the Wright Brothers Memorial through the bomb track, Run Hill, Nax Head Woods, to Jockeys Ridge. Disruption of a wildlife portal will call more, will cause more unpleasant interactions with wildlife due to loss of habitat. High-density development will have a negative impact on the Run Hill State Park, which is a designated state natural area. This will require additional staffing to manage to preserve. Additional foot traffic to the ridge will have a major impact on the natural resources. This parcel is a flood hazard with low-lying areas that have historically flooded over time. The town's current uses and future uses. The town currently operates a vegetative limb pile and mulching operation. It also serves as a store managed debris area, um, store debris management area, sorry. If development of this would eliminate, development would eliminate these uses, and there's likely no relocation option for the town, so we either eliminate curbside limb collection and vegetative debris drop-off at the public services yard, or the town will need to pay to transport all vegetative debris to Dare County landfill at significant cost to the town. Additionally, the town would no longer provide free mulch to its residents. The site is currently used as a recreation facility, the KCR Logan Disc Golf Course. I think you'll figure that out. Development of this property would eliminate the recreation activity at, in this area. The town's West Side Recreation Group has proposed additional recreation at this site in the near future. The town needs to consider the town's use at this location. As the town continues to grow and expand, this is the last parcel of land available, available to the town for future expansion. Safety concerns. Traffic patterns to access, assess, access the parcel. There's only one access point to this parcel via Veterans Drive. This is also the only road to the first flight school campuses. All stakeholders express major concerns about traffic and congestion through the school zones. Additionally, concerns about high increase in traffic along the already very busy Collington Road. Dare County School representatives expressed concerns for student movement throughout the campus, since majority of the athletic fields require crossing the Veterans Drive, as well as student and staff movement between schools. Additional safety measures will have to be taken by the school to ensure safety with the students and staff with addition, with the addition of a large multifamily development in close proximity. Uh, increase in population for Killable Hills with a large density development will require additional police and fire staff and equipment. Killable Hills Police, Fire, and Dare County Sheriff's expressed concern about the limited access to the site and several public, public safety concerns. The economic impact to the town, a high-density development of this magnitude will require additional personnel, equipment, particularly for the police and fire departments and public services departments. In order to maintain the current level of services, we will need additional personnel and at least one additional commercial restaurant. The finance department has computed with the additional population up to 14% to maintain the town's existing services. Town property taxes would need to increase, um, 2.4 cents, including additional personnel equipment, not including additional personnel equipment, which could raise the tax rate 3 to 5 cents with a large density development on this parcel. The land use concerns include, the change is not consistent with the recently adopted land use plan. The land use plan would have to be changed prior to consideration of any zoning changes in the area. Several sections and multiple policies will need to be amended, which will take three to six months to complete the process. Current zoning does not permit this use, and the zoning ordinance will have to be amended. High-density multifamily is not a compatible use with the schools that will have to use, that they'll, use with the schools that will have to be used to access the property. This will cause a conflict of use between traffic and accessibility. And the other concerns are, um, from the school board, the projected change in the town's population will likely lead to redistricting of the first light schools, as two of the three are near or over current capacity. And, um, what we were asked to do, and, and what was to, to give you this report from our, uh, community stakeholders and our internal stakeholders, and I tried to give you a summary, there's quite a bit more information in your packet. There's the intent of Diane St. Clair Baum, when she deeded the property to us and gifted half of that cost back to the town. Um, and there's a lot of minutes in there. There's also a lot more from our internal stakeholders, our, our department heads. Um, and I think what we were looking for from you is to whether we need to move forward in the process of a change of land classification or not. And then, we've talked before about addressing essential housing. Staff has a lot of ideas and programs and, and projects to bring to the board at a future time, to discuss how we can do it with our existing housing stock. And I'll answer any questions you might have. And there's a few of the, uh, community stakeholders in the audience, if you have any specific questions.
Right. We really appreciate, I think I can speak for everyone here, on the level of effort that went into the report. Certainly, um, uh, it was, it is extremely thorough, and, uh, brought in a whole lot of folks to, to weigh in on it. And I was appreci, very much appreciative of the, the technical aspects when it came to timeframes, or working on a land use plan, the things that kind of get in the way of, of this kind of a goal, uh, as well as the sort of technical trouble of, of changing the zoning and that sort of thing. These are, these are, the word I believe, or, these are big challenges. Um, and we needed to know about them, and that's really why we, we sent you, uh, doing this work, and we really appreciate all the work that went into it. So, thank you to all the department heads, as well as all of the folks that you talked to outside and, and the other organizations. I do want to balance that against, um, why we're even talking about it in the first place, which is, is that wider issue of, of housing. Uh, when I, when we talked about it a month ago and said, let's talk to the stakeholders, I kind of imagined stakeholders being folks that need employees, or the folks that are saying, I can't find a place for my employees to live, and that sort of thing. I'm really excited having talked about it kind of conceptually before we put you on this task to, to get the technical details, to now be able to bring it to the public, and this is step one of, uh, maybe, no other steps, maybe lots more steps. Uh, but we want to have the discussion throughout the community. I, I think that it's pretty clear to say that we're not asking you to change any zoning today. Um, there isn't, uh, sufficient support for any even loose conceptual idea yet, uh, and may never be. Uh, but we, we deserve, uh, the problem itself, housing deserves our attention and our thoughtfulness. We've put our brains towards a whole bunch of other problems and made great progress on them when it came to other challenges in the community, whether it was big houses on the oceanfront or fire suppression. We've, we've come up with creative solutions along the way. So, I don't want to give up on, on that being a possibility. I'll also let you know that the county, who, sort of behind the agreement with that organization they mentioned, that Fortible Housing Group, um, they are looking at dozens of properties across the entire county, including Kitty Hawk, and down in Buxton, and, uh, Manio. Um, so, we, we don't have to be part of it. Um, I want to know whether the people at Killable Hills want to help solve that problem, and whether a portion of this property is a possibility, uh, particularly if disc golf can be saved somewhere else. Or, maybe it's possible to do something smaller on this site, or rezone just a part of it, to be part of the solution. Because I, I hope that we see ourselves as a community as problem solvers, and knowing that the market by itself will not take care of this. The market will only take care of it through people driving from farther and farther away to fill the jobs that, that are here. Um, so, that's, yes.
Would you like to hear what some of the options that we'd like to give the board, and see if, for essential housing, that, that deals more in our, our existing housing stock? Would you, I mean, do you want to, just to have a...
Sure, I think, yes. That for folks who haven't been following this, we, we recently just, at the previous meeting, the meeting or maybe two ago, um, we passed a new ordinance that allows cluster homes or cottage courts in the residential Lowe's zone with properties that are over an acre. Basically, what this would incentivize, this is public, this is a personal private property, they can do what they want with their own property, but instead of putting a small number of homes on large lots, which is what's normally allowed in the R1, this would allow someone who has an acre to put, uh, small cottages, uh, in, in a little cluster, um, like you see sometimes cottage courts on Peachtree. Um, so that would allow, to help me with the details, 12 units per acre instead of, uh, one per lot, which is usually 15,000 square feet or more. Um, so that's one way we're incentivizing the market to help take care of this problem, and hopefully people will take us up on that offer. Um, but yeah, Meredith and the, the board and the team has, has been brainstorming for years about this, and recently really come together with a bunch of great ideas, which I think Meredith is going to share with us now, a few of them that we're going to consider over the next few months, that would, again, help use this incentivization idea to help private equity come forward. And, and really, I think, I'll reiterate, that we're not so much talking about affordability of housing, or just availability. And I think in your report, you aptly pointed out that it's really about the ratio between short-term rentals and long-term rentals. I think in the, yeah, we get the numbers right, 55% of our housing stock is currently short-term rental, and only 45. And it's even a worse ratio in, in Nax yet, so they have a bigger problem than we do. Um, but, uh, we're trying to find metrics that we can look at, and have that be our level of success. How do we move that, that percentage in the right direction through incentives? So, let us know what you've been thinking about.
Okay. The town, the town does have a lot of housing stock, and the scale from short-term to long-term rentals has changed, and that's what we've been experiencing for several years. Ideally, the attempt would be to rebalance those scales through regulations and incentives, while careful not to tip the scales too much to lose too many short-term rentals as to affect our local economy. The 2020 land use plan provides the following data. We have 600, 6,743 units. 43.5 are year-round, 60, 56.5% are short-term. So, through incentives and other, um, and, and, um, regulations, if we could slide this scale 5%, it would result in 337 long-term housing units using our existing housing stock. Some of our ideas are to possibly, um, zoning alternatives to mandate long-term housing in specific zoning districts. The, um, legislation allows us to prohibit short-term housing by zoning district if we want to. Grant funding for voluntary conversion from long-term to short-term housing. Possible state bill as a local bill to allow for a tax reduction for people that want to do long-term housing. Lessen the regulations for duplex and accessory dwelling units in all of our zoning districts. There are just a few, um, and they are real possibilities that are not difficult to accomplish with our existing housing stock.
Yeah, I think it goes without saying that we're all very interested in those, and we're ready to move those things down the, down the path towards something we can vote on. Um, but we definitely want to look at the incentivization structure to make sure that the, the numbers make sense, so that we can encourage people to do something that'll be in everyone's best interest. So, yeah, we're looking forward to seeing that in the next few meetings, as soon as you can get it together. Do you have any, any, uh, does anybody else have questions for Seth?
No, I just think that, um, it's probably the best report that I've seen in staffs to be commended. They did a great job. They, looks like they went into every area that we wanted them to. Um, and I can, I can tell you upfront, right now, uh, that the consideration we have is the change of use on this particular parcel of plan. That's what we're looking at, and that's what we're going to ultimately make a decision on, uh, first. And I'm convinced that this piece of land doesn't need to have a change of use on it. It needs to stay like it is. So, I'll just let you know that right out of the gate.
I assume that could be true, yes. I don't know. Well, I don't know. Um, I just, uh, I want to, uh, say that in looking at the report, in talking with staff, um, you know, when you make any decision, you're making this decision best interest of the town. You heard that? That's the standard. And then you just, just like any decision you make any day, uh, you weigh the benefits, you weigh the detriments, and try to figure out, well, is this a, is this a wise thing to do? Is this wise to change this, this parcel of land to, uh, change zoning on this parcel of land? And, you know, really looking at it, you know, with all the aspects, you know, disc golf being actually a small part of it in my mind. But, you know, with all due respect, but, all, looking at all of it together, you know, you realize that, I think that this property needs to be maintained for the town's future, um, for the town's growth, for the town's community, um, to protect the campus of the schools there, um, to, uh, to not add to the density of that area, which is already dense, content road, all that. So, um, I think when you look at every aspect, you know, you just see that the scale is tipped towards this property not being the property that, that will be used for the high-density housing. And, and moreover, I don't think it actually really solves the problem, per se. Although it does, it is important to try to work on this problem, and I think we can do it through a lot of other ways, a lot of different spots that, like creativity, uh, the Miss Guns just stated right there, that we're all about that. We're all about doing our part, Killable Hills, to solve this outer backs problem, right? I don't think Killable Hills should have to, um, be taxed in this way, and this property, this unique property be taxed in this way, to, to, for us to try to solve the problem by ourselves, okay? I think it's unique property, and it needs to stay that way. Um, it has a lot of potential uses down the road, and obviously, disc golf is, is just one that obviously has proven to be, you know, a great spot for our community. So, that's, that's all I have to say. I also, you know, echo what Christian Gray said, that I, I don't ever see myself personally, uh, voting to change the use of this, of this track.
I guess that's what I'm going to want.
Sure.
Um, well, I would agree. I, I would like to see it stay as government recreation, so to speak, um, for multitude of reasons. But again, going back to the fact that we, yeah, you know, I know all of us are bringing up workforce housing, because that's this particular project. But again, that's not what our job is up here. Our job is to decide whether it stays that, or whether it goes to high-density residential. So, um, that being said, I've, we, we got the report. Obviously, you all can see the report. But I, I called our high school principal, I called, um, Dave Pellic, I've talked to Aaron, you know, there, I've talked to a lot of these, these stakeholders that, um, that it, and it would present a lot of problems moving into high-density. That's just not something that I'm concerned about.
Yeah, um, I am in agreement with my fellow commissioners. Um, I really wanted to thank staff again for putting together a quality, detailed report. We heard highlights tonight, there was a lot more content in here. And this was not an easy thing to put together. It was stressful, and it was tough, and it was a big ask from us, and you all did a very nice job in educating our board and the folks here tonight, everyone who read it. Thank you. Um, we talked about some of the highlights that we've done recently to address housing. We talked about some things we can work on, and I'm, I'm excited about going in that direction. But I, I do feel, and I strongly feel that rezoning the bomb track to high-density residential is not the way to go. And what really cemented my feeling on this was kind of looking back way beyond stakeholder comments. What was the, you know, character matters. And we made a, we had an agreement with the Bond family to, when we acquired that property, that should be used for the benefit of the public. And we have seen that disc golf course has been for the benefit of the public. And I'm really happy that, you know, we've been working to keep it there, find ways to grow, expand it.
I do have one other quick thing, that when we were talking about, um, different properties available, I would like, there, there are other large properties in Killable Hills, they're just private. I would like, there are other large properties in Kill the Hills, they're just private.
Held enough to.
I have a question, Seth, can we move on? Is there actually anybody here on behalf of the county or coastal affordable housing to discuss this or represent? Nobody?
But it also wouldn't be appropriate to discuss the specific development when we're simply looking at a possible change of use. You can't consider a specified development when you're looking at change of use, it has to be generalized.
Well, I'm kind of torn at this point because clearly I'm the odd one out on this, and it's not because I don't love this golf, which I do. I love our town, and I want what's best for it. And I came to my way of thinking about this a little differently than my fellow commissioners, and, you know, we've talked often up here about being such a great board because we often agree. We agree a whole lot of the time. Probably more unanimous votes than any board I can think of. This particular evening, I don't think we're going to take a vote on anything, but I think you guys can see as clearly as I do, there isn't really a will to go in this direction. It would take a whole lot of creativity to do so, and would take a whole lot of will. So given that there isn't any, I feel like we've really exhausted the idea. It had a lot of potential in my mind, and I saw a future for our town in a way that would benefit everybody in the long term, that our kids have an ability to come and stay here and start off in life in a smaller place that's one, two, or three bedrooms, that our businesses would benefit, that would have a whole bunch of knock-on benefits for everybody in the community. But I'm first to admit, when I'm in the minority position, that's all right. That's what democracy is all about. And so I really appreciate everybody bringing their feelings and all of their intellect and thoughtfulness to the thing, and we can move forward and find other ways to make the town better. So with that, I think we'll move on to the next part of our agenda. You guys are, do we need any action? I don't think we do.
I'd like to be clear that the consensus of the board is to not move forward with doing any zoning amendments or any land use change plans.
Right, we're not asking for that.
So this shuts this door off.
Yeah, I think that they're pretty clear, yeah. I'd be willing to make a motion that we, you know, not address this, that we do not entertain the change of use for this track and deny, you know, we just tell staff that we don't want to go further and stop it right here.
Thank you, Derek.
And that's.
So I guess that's a motion on the floor?
It is.
I'll second that. We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion?
Other than the fact there is other places, like Mayor Pro Tim said, there are other places that this could work in maybe a smaller degree, but this track alone is not for this.
All right. So we have a motion and a second, one more chance for further discussion.
Just want to clarify, the motion is, your motion is that we not use this track of land at this time for this type of change?
Correct. I'm good on that?
I thought the motion was not to pursue a change of use of the bomb track.
Yeah, not to pursue.
Not to pursue the change of use of the bomb track.
That's what the court has.
Yeah, okay.
Not to pursue a change of use.
And include land use plan in that as well, please, since that would be the second prong. You'd have to amend the land use plan and then the zoning, so you don't want to venture into either.
Correct.
Can we read it back one more time, just to be clear? I think it's good.
Yeah, we want it right.
It should be to not pursue change of use for this track, for the bomb track, or a changed land, countering use plan.
Or.
Yes.
Yes.
Good, everybody there? All right, so we have a motion, a second, one more chance for further discussion. All right, hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Okay. So we put that to bed. All right. You're allowed. We're exciting board meetings. Government, it's a worry after all. You might have to stick around for appointments to board.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, too exciting appointment that we, he said regulations ordinance update. I have a statement.
Yes, sir, since inception, the town's beach driving program has been very popular with all the hill citizens and visitors during the October 1 to April 30 beach driving season. On July 6 of this year, the town of Naxhead terminated the reciprocal agreement with the cooperating, cooperative beach driving program between the two towns. It noted, stated that references to its agreement with Kill the Hills has been removed from its ordinances. As a result of the agreement termination, staff has drafted, for the board's consideration, an updated seaside regulations ordinance to reflect the changes to the town's beach driving program, along with updated, general updates to sections or the ordinance for clarification. Staff recommends approval of the seaside regulation ordinance update, and a motion would be in order.
So a lot of good changes in there, particularly some language that has fallen out of favor, struck some of those things out of there. Yeah, it's a nice cleanup. And do we know what was behind that decision from Naxhead?
I don't know specifically. I do know that they did increase their fees. The fees, the fees for the property owners and residents of Naxhead is $50 a year. Non-residents or non-property owners is $100. Our fee is 25 for anyone, and we also have a 14-day permit, you know, for the people that are just here for, you know, a week or two. The permits in Naxhead, if you're a resident or a property owner, are purchased at the town hall only, have to go and show proof of that, and then the non-resident property owners can purchase those from tackle shops. In Naxhead, our assistant town manager was in contact with the tackle shop at Stop &amp; Shop, and they were willing to sell our permits for us, so we would be able to offer them in the future online at the town hall and at the Stop &amp; Shop. In any future, we don't mention them specifically. We left it open in, in case there's more tackle shops that come around.
All right, I was going to ask a question. Just in reviewing it, I'm always advocates for a board maintaining its power. I saw that there's power being taken away from the board, and it seems that the town manager would have the power to, would be the one that would have the power to designate which accesses could be used versus, that was one of the changes in the ordinance. And I'm just going to ask you why that was, why that was changing.
As opposed to having to have a board meeting for the, or to get consensus from the board to do that, I think having the people that are on the ground, that decision would be based on people in the field recommending to the town manager that that be changed?
So is the board assisting with what town manager would normally do versus what a board?
I think so. I don't, I, yeah, it's more, I think it's more of a day-to-day operations than you setting a policy.
But not you, but some other town manager maybe might decide, we're going to, you know, zero this down to one access or something, you know, could.
Then I would, then I was assuming that the board would have a problem.
We're not going to fire him over this, probably, I would say.
I was going to say, I was assuming the board would have a problem with their town manager, and that would need to be addressed.
Possibly, I just, but you don't have that. Well, I agree, but they also not, you do lose control like that, you know, I mean, I mean, you're not going to fire somebody over that, I would think. I don't think a commissioner.
He's surprised.
I don't know, but, okay, okay, well enough. That's what, that was just my question.
I mean, certainly the board's discretion. I've never, anytime that an access has had to be closed, it's been because there's some issues, not just willy-nilly, I don't.
Well, of course, I'm not saying that. I'm just saying that, you noticed that, I noticed that, so I was just wondering why that was the case. Thank you.
It was put in place long ago before.
I think it was probably. I got you. As Michael pointed out, thank you, Michael, there's a section in here that allows the town manager to determine if beach driving needs to be closed, as we had to do this past season because of some issues. And that's based, again, on the recommendation of the people in the field, fire chief, police chief, and so this is, he's been inconsistent with that calls made by the manager based on recommendations of staff, so.
Needs to be done between meetings.
Thank you, I'm satisfied, I just asked.
No, thank you, Michael, I.
It's quicker response time, you have to be able to address something, so.
For all of public safety.
Right, yes, sir.
Yeah, all respect, I'm satisfied, I just wanted, anytime they're removing some, not from the future board, some sort of power of the board, I was, I'm just curious as to know, so that's worth talking about. Thank you.
There's no further discussion, we leave for motion.
I'll make a motion to your previous seaside regulation ordinance, as presented.
Second, we got a second from Mr. Gray. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Nay, anybody nay? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is appointments. It's been fortunate that many of those folks who, whose terms are coming to an end are interested in being reappointed, so we'll start at the top of the personnel board. So Jackie Rick's samples, term expires this month, and she's expressed a desire for reappointment, so if that, if we're all.
I would, I would move that we reappoint Jackie Rick's sample to the personnel board.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries. Community parents has a vacancy from a member that moved out of the area.
Mayor, we already brought this up a few months ago. I'd like for the CAC to have a meeting again before we appoint a member, just to kind of, it's been a while since we met. Ongoing projects, we have annual projects, but I'd like to see us kind of put something new on the, on the front burner.
So that a new member might have something to do when they got appointed.
Yeah, really, see where we're going. So, you know, Sue, if you'd like to chime in, you're welcome to, you said, I think, let's have a meeting first, and then as we decide where we're going, before we break somebody in.
We're not breaking any steps by keeping it open that long, we're all right?
When do you guys meet again?
September, when do we meet?
September 22nd, it'll be before Thursday in September, after four months off.
So we'll bring it back to October.
Next meeting, October, that works. So NLC's Historic Landmarks Commission, we have Sadie Markland and Mary Simpson's terms both expire September 2022, and both have also expressed a desire for reappointment.
I would move that we reappoint both, both to their committees.
So the Historic Landmarks Commission, second that. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Two more appointments? Thank you for that. Item number four of new business is Outer Banks Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan Progress Report. Great stuff in there.
Oh, it's riveting, isn't it?
You know, there's some good accomplishments in there, you got to dig, but.
They are.
Some nice accomplishments in there.
But as part of the community rating system, which is, gets our, we improved a class last year, so our citizens get 25% off of their flood insurance. The town reviews and updates hazard mitigation plan annually. We are currently part of the Outer Banks Regional Mitigation Plan, which includes Currituck, Dare, and all of its municipalities. Each of local governments develops mitigation strategies. Our part of the 2020 Outer Banks Hazard Mitigation Plan is located in Appendix D. The attachment is our Appendix D and our updates to our strategies for inclusion in the Hazard Mitigation Plan. This report will be sent to the town CRS coordinator as part of our annual review.
Cool. So when's that review take place?
It was due July 1st, I mean, August 1st.
Okay.
It's already going.
It's already going.
If you look at the report on the, before the big pieces of paper, I say that we are disseminating this report to the Board of Commissioners at their August 8, 2022 meeting.
Got you, got you. Excellent. No action needed?
Nope.
Yes, sir.
Good. Thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Next up is committee reports. Another committee there. Anything for visitor bureau?
I was steering until the morning, actually.
Make sure you tell them about your favorite chair.
Always with the chair. All right, any other committees? Anybody left?
No, sir.
All right. Next item is Commissioner's Agenda. Start down this end.
Nothing tonight.
Oh, except the light, can I just say the lifeguard? I loved the lifeguard video.
That was good, that was good.
But I really did love when they came in, and I know that's, but a suggest, just a suggestion, maybe an idea for next summer. Could we come to them and like, I don't know?
We could go bring them cookies at 5:00 before they're eating.
My kids always bring them, we always bring them popsicles and stuff like that, but anyway, I don't know.
I like that idea.
Just something kind of cool. And.
I think we have to, we have to have public notice that we're all going to get.
Yeah, so I don't know, I don't know how that would work, but, you know. And then also, again, I know I said it last year, but very cool to see the faces of the kids who were in the junior lifeguard, you know, because there were several faces, so I know that's something that we, you know, how fun, and so I think it's really cool that, that.
It's a great story, it's out, great program.
That it beats our lifeguard program, it's very cool.
Oscar did junior lifeguard this year, loved it.
It's great. My kids have done it for years.
That does everything, doesn't it?
I keep them busy.
Or he keeps you busy.
Yeah, yeah.
I just want to comment, I don't know how it happened, or maybe, maybe I'm late to the gate, but I love the fact that this light over here for the crossing, the content road is the change, and those DOT, eventually got to it, but is, am I incorrect, the light, they have a new side light where the crossing is?
They put that up a long time ago. I actually just noticed it not too long ago, but Steve, the side light, the stoplight that's on the side.
Did they change to the coast?
Several years.
But they didn't, am I making that up? They didn't change the post or change the headlights? It looks so different.
They did something, they did something a number of years ago with their.
They put the blackout stuff on the sides of it, so it's very, very different now.
They did just did something, I'm not, I'm not crazy. They just did something, I come, I come down there all the time. It was different, it was, it's different, I don't know if you noticed it, but.
They put the blackout so that the sun doesn't reflect off of, behind it, so it frames it.
You'd see it better on the side.
I don't know, they just did it, but.
You're not alone, just what you did.
It looks, I don't know what happened, but I could see it for the first time.
That's the one he told.
On the side one, they fixed the side one and the top, and the two top, I believe, I don't know.
Certain angles.
Maybe I'm wrong. It wouldn't be the first time.
But it is nice.
It looks different, I could, you could see the light, and that sun on that light is, was, I mean, this is brutal.
Couple of items I'd like to bring up. You know, I've been thinking here lately about where we're at with the firehouse, and something popped into my mind that I wanted to bring up to the board and see if we could maybe get a little consensus here. I think that once we. I think that once we do, once that firehouse gets built and we occupy it, I think we need to have it in memory of W E Card. He was, um, I'm pretty sure he was the longest-serving chief we had, uh, he was the first paid chief, uh, and, but he was a commissioner and very, very instrumental in the town and the development of the town. And I, I've got in my mind that it would just be a great tribute to him, uh, you know, to, to name that firehouse in his arms. I did take the liberty to talk to a couple of county commissioners the other night, a night out, and they said, oh yeah, it's a great idea, no problem, you know, so.
Do we have a, a naming process? The school has a very elaborate one.
I spoke with Debbie about that and, um, she indicated that at one time the plans, uh, that they had for the Eighth Street Station, they were actually gonna do that. So I think it's consistent with what, you know, staff had thought all along, but I just, I wanted to bring that up and, and, you know, kind of throw it out there so everybody would know it. Um, I think it's a good idea. The second thing that I wanted to talk about is, there's been a lot of comments and, and letters that, at least I've received, that indicate, uh, people would like to see a multi-use path instead of sidewalks. And I think that we need to investigate that. I, you know, I think we need to figure out if it can be done, um, how we can fund it, um, and what kind of plan we could come up with. What I'd like to do is, I'd like to get board consensus to send that to the planning board and have the planning board contact the S I S C and form some sort of group or whatever, or either jointly, um, investigate what it would take to have multi-path along the bypass and kill the wheels from down line to down line. I think it would be a huge benefit if it could be done, and it may not be able to be done, but I think.
I think it's about our priorities, I mean, we're talking about, we, we've put a significant chunk of money towards sidewalks.
Yep.
Not as much as we might like, yet nobody's interested in raising taxes. It's really a matter of what order we do things, right?
No, I'm not advocating raising taxes, I'm telling you that.
Didn't mean to imply that.
Yeah, but, and, and there has been talk that there may be some money available, uh, you know, at some different agencies that could do a grant program.
We never pay by ourselves for sidewalks, do we?
We have some.
Yeah, but I think, I think we need to investigate whether it can or can't be done and what it would take to do it if it can.
Right, I'll just reframe the question is, where does it fit in the priority list of other things that are bike competitive related? Because we have, we have long-term C I P plans for that and, but I see your point, I think if I could rephrase it would be that you'd like to see us raise the importance level of that over, you know, maybe sidewalks.
No, I'd like to see them investigate it, you know, I'd like to see them look into.
Know how much this is.
Like an additional project.
Yeah, yeah, I, I, I don't wanna, you know, get it confused with some other projects as priority ranking and stuff like that. I want them to look at whether or not it can be done.
Well, what I do know about that, which I'll just bring up now, just to save that part of the discussion, is that, and tell me if we're getting this wrong, I know folks that know these things. Multi-use has a definition, is getting people from one place to another, and the reason that is not recommended for our bypass is we have so many curb cuts, so it's not really safe or good for that sort of thing, but I'm with you on a wider sidewalk or a path that could be, you still call it a multi-use path because that's got a bunch of rules, but the, you gotta have a stop sign and a cross, all that kind of thing. But what they have in Nagshead is not technically a multi-use path, is it? Is it, it's just a wider sidewalk, it's eight feet, not ten.
I think, I think it's classified as a multi-use, I think.
We all call it that, I don't think that's technically correct, anybody else know about this stuff?
Okay, we'll have to have someone to investigate that, but, and, and as far as the, the, uh, curb cuts.
Yeah.
You know, they've got a lot of curb cuts too, um, because that was a couple of the things that we, we discussed this a couple of times. And that was one of the things that, that was brought up, was they have a lot of curb cuts. We have a lot of areas where it would be close to the bypass and that's, you know, not what we want. They've got all that too. I videoed it and I sent it to all the board members. And, um, you know, when you get down into, uh, some of their business areas, they got curb cuts right after curb cuts. And I'm talking about where the food line is and Stan White Realty and all that, man, they got one right after the other, just, if not more than we do. And they've got some places where it's less than a foot from the, from the bypass, uh, you know, you, you're only talking about this much room.
Sure, sure.
So, um, I, I just think it's something that needs to be investigated because I'm getting a lot of people that are asking, you know, hey, can we do it? We may not be able to, and.
It's very top of mind because everyone drives up and down the bypass, it does look nice in Nagshead.
It, it, it's open and it's inviting and it, it, you know, it just, to me, it looks appealing. And we've been talking about, you define the, you know, areas with grass cutting and stuff like that, um, you know, to me, makes sense to do it, but I think we need to play, figure out if we can do it, that's my point.
Sounds good.
Okay.
I guess that's commissioner's agenda.
Kind of a question, kind of a light bulb went off, commissioner during your speaking is, I remember in the past we used to have, we would have kind of the open forum meetings, we have joint planning board and board of commissioners meetings, we only schedule those for specific projects. I mean, we haven't done it in a long, long time, COVID probably had something to do with that, but it, it was kind of nice to include planning board in a while in that type of meeting. I don't, is there any reason why we haven't done it in a while? Is it something we can try again?
Well, typically there is a, there's a conversation that you wanna have, where it's setting goals or, or so forth, but yeah, definitely COVID played a big part, yeah. For some time we were all doing Zoom meetings and so forth, but sure, that's, if, 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 that's something you wanna discuss with the planning board.
We, staff was gonna ask the board at the next meeting to set a joint work session with the planning board to discuss the changes that might, the board might wanna see for essential housing, because they are zoning changes, to have a joint meeting and bring all the great minds together so that you're actually advising your advisory board, so we were gonna recommend that, not in the summertime, but more towards the late fall, um, so when we went into the possibilities for changes to our, our existing zoning ordinance, we wanted to see if the board would want to do that as a joint work session with the planning board, so more to come on that.
Okay, yeah, good.
That's all I have there.
So, I'm sorry, consensus, we got the consensus to send
I think so.
this item to the planning board, um, in coordination with the street improvement and special projects committee. Thank you.
If, if you guys push that review to next spring, right? Inventory streets.
But this is green inventory, that, this would be different, right?
Be different, okay.
And we're gonna do a little staff investigation before we bring everybody around, just so we can talk intelligently to you, so we'll go together if everybody, if that's okay.
So that's commissioner's agenda, mayor's agenda, a couple of things pop in my mind, same thing, constituents come and tell me a bunch of things all the time and, one was, and I had not seen this, it said, you know, it's great, people love that, the crosswalks now are lighted when you come up on them. That's really helpful. Um, confusion is when people are back not really close to the road, you can't tell whether they're trying to get, everybody's done that. So apparently somewhere in Nagshead, somebody told me, I haven't seen it, they've got a button that makes a flashing light. Have you seen, has anybody seen that?
Yeah, we, we have one in Marriott, in Jersey.
One in Marriott, okay.
Marriott, they put overhead lighting and they also put the, the blinking signs.
Maybe that's what they were thinking of.
What, what we noticed through more research is that we had better driver awareness, because most people don't hit it. They just walk through it and the, the solar lights auto-illuminate. Um, and they're extremely expensive, but there is a new one in Nagshead, near the village of Nagshead Beach Club. It literally has a little solar, you know, and I noticed it this weekend, um, but I haven't seen it at nighttime, but it's the same, it's the same principle. You would hit it like you're crossing on the bi, on the bypass and it would blink for five seconds, ten seconds, something like that, but when we looked into them, they're very pricey.
All right, just one of those ideas that somebody threw at me, I hadn't figured it out, so I'm gonna bring it up. That's all I've got, mayor's agenda, town manager's agenda?
No, sir, not the same.
All right, how about, uh, the consent agenda, I'm sorry, the, uh, town attorney's agenda?
Nothing from me, mayor.
All right, then we'll get to consent agenda.
Yes, there are two items on the consent agenda, the minutes from June the eleventh, twenty twenty-two, and the month of the report, excuse me, the minutes from July eleventh, twenty twenty-two, and the month of the report from June twenty twenty-two. Staff recommends approval of consent agenda as presented and a motion would be in order.
So, right.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Consent agenda.
Thank you.
Public, have another chance to speak, someone's spinning around and it's Daryl Davis. Say again.
Daryl Davis. It is now forty-four twenties. Um, so just if I heard that correct, as far as affordable housing on the bomb track, that's dead in the water?
Pretty much.
Any, any change or need to be noted?
Now would have to happen first.
Correct.
Right.
So my other thing I keep hearing is, it's like those little words you're using, other ideas, other things we wanna do out there. I'd love for that to be shared as well, I wish all the people were here, because they kind of skipped over that, got all happy, jumped right out the door, but I think it's really important for people to understand, the town has other ideas they wanna do out there. And it's, I wish y'all would just tell us what you wanna do, because I've been pulling teeth trying to figure it out, I've been corrected because I've misheard something, so, and I should be correct if I misspoke, but I keep hearing from people, oh, we can move a couple of holes. And you kind of heard that tonight, you just can't pick up a couple of holes and disc golf and move it and have the same thing. I keep also, we had a conversation, you mentioned Fresh Pond for moving it there. And I've had meetings with the town and then everyone that I've spoken with has absolutely no faith that that will ever get done at Fresh Pond. Even the Nagshead commissioner that was here has no faith that will ever be done with Nagshead cooperation. So I think I wanna be real careful in saying, well, we got this other place that we wanna, we can just move a disc golf course and start a new disc golf course from there. So I'd like to be real open and name that place, tell us about it. Make it real clear, because there's a lot of people have a lot of opinions on this, and having a history with the town myself, we could never get nothing done with Nagshead and the Fresh Pond area. Um, I think you even have to worry about homeland security in that area because it's, the, the water's protected. So there's buffer zones, there's all kind, they gotta worry about shutting down hunting season for bow hunters, which I think is going on right now. So there's a lot of things out there, there's, you know, the gun range, I mean, there's this, we're not here to shut someone else down so we can do what we want. That makes absolutely no sense, and this is what I call very greedy person if I was to think that way. I think it's also just a, I just think it needs to be brought up, um, and I wanna make something clear, one of y'all mentioned that, um, you said, I don't know if this problem's just gonna go away, we used to have a childcare issue in this county, remember that? We, we were all dying for childcare, we needed it so bad, the Y M C A about threw a million dollars at it, what happened the next year?
We still do.
Still have a childcare.
We still have a childcare problem.
But it's not necessarily what it was, not what they thought it was, they, they pulled their money out, they found out it kind of solved itself to a certain degree. I think this housing issue is gonna solve itself to a certain degree. I think a lot of people bought with the intent their house is gonna be just a goldmine Airbnb. And they're finding out they're not renting it near as much as they had been and they're not making the money that they had been. That's coming from a real estate background, so I pay attention to these things. So anyways, most of my stuff had something to do with, with, we were going with affordable housing, so we're not, I'm cutting half my stuff, more than half my stuff out. But the idea of just saying, we're just gonna move this to Fresh Pond, that doesn't apply with me, it doesn't seem to apply with anyone else because no one has faith in it. I'd really like to know what the town would like to do with the property, what else? And also, I've asked, and I'd like to see if we can get an answer, we've asked if we could get, uh, sponsorships back on the holds because they ran out in May. We'd like to be able, be, give them a chance to renew their sponsorships and keep it funding itself, which has been. And I'd like to know if the town has a problem with that. I don't know why it's so quiet.
It's not supposed to be a conversation.
We're responding.
Public comment.
We're responding.
Public comment.
Can I ask for a response? Yes, that's the next time.
After we get done with public comment, we'll do.
All right, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak to public comment? Hearing none, we will close public comment and look at some response to public comment.
I'll respond to theirs, as I know, very well, um, so, uh, I think, yeah, I think one, one thing is that we need to, um, we need to have some sort of a relationship with this, this, I mean, we do, I guess, but we need to have maybe more of a formal relationship with this, uh, this golf community and, 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 you know, we see that it's popular, we felt that, we felt that today. Maybe we didn't feel that before today, but we felt that today and we saw that everybody came out. And, um, the cool, the cool thing is when, when we sat on that committee together and we voted for that and you, you know, that was something you created, but, but everybody voted for that on that, on that bomb track committee. Now we're never, now we're, there was no, there was never a discussion about getting rid of it, it was just a discussion about moving it and that was even a, that was even a plan, not, not a plan of ours, but a plan of others.
That was an emergency plan.
But it wasn't a plan of ours, is what I'm saying, and you know that when we did our, when we, when we set our original, um, you know, when we originally voted on that, that we, there was always the idea that it could have to be picked up and moved.
For an emergency.
Well, for other reasons, for use, for other reasons, and that was the foot, and the footprint alone was, uh, the low footprint was the reason that it was pretty much what we were going with, plus the low cost and you did a lot of the work yourself. So, so, so that, that being said, um, now we sit today with, with a, a disc golf course that's really popular and there's no question about, there's never a question up here about getting rid of it. That's all I want, that's all I wanna tell you, there was never a question about getting rid of it, so, you know, can the property be used for other things on the line? I mean, could there be pressure to, to move it again, for sure, could there be, you know, there's a lot of, you know, a lot of, a lot of people, you know, the list of people that wanted that property, you know, and wanted to use it when we were on that committee together, so, so anyway, um, but yeah, I think it's a major accomplishment that it's, you know, it's a group that we definitely take note of and also, uh, there was never a discussion of getting rid of it, okay, so.
And to answer your other question, there are no other plans of any formality. We have a whole bunch of documents where a whole bunch of different committees have said over the years, oh, oh, here's a bunch of great things we could do with a big piece of land. And the things that people thought of in nineteen seventy-seven are fairly consistent with what they thought of in eighty-five and again in nine, whatever, two thousand and thirteen, whatever it was. So you could see that we, we do want, I think as a community, we wanna find a way to access that waterfront so we could see it and enjoy it at some point. How and when we find a budget to do something with that, I, I don't know when that'll come up again, this was an opportunity to do that. If we'd sold some of this land, we could have used that to develop a park that was down there, all that's off the table. Same with, same with the other location for the, uh, disc golf, you know, without the first domino going down, all of it's off the table at this point. So there aren't any things in the near term to, to worry about, but with, like you said, as community members, we're always dreaming and scheming about what we can, uh, do to make our town better and that property has tons of potential. Right now it's got a wonderful disc golf course on it and that may be the only thing for a while, but, but there's a little more room for something, so, you know, we're not closing any doors either.
And there were some recommendations from the website.
Lots of great recommendations about boat launches.
I was gonna say.
We have, yeah, we have lots of plans, lots of broad plans, but no specifics, we'd like to hear them. So when, when we come together with the money and then we'll get down to specifics.
Money was a big thing, yeah.
Yeah, so, uh, still leaning toward sidewalks and things for the, for sure.
Anybody that's paying attention recognizes how successful it is, so, you know, I don't think there's much, you know, we're all paying attention to that, so.
So the next, I guess, so my, I guess my question is, what, what will be the process then going forward with renewing maybe sponsorships? And what is the town involvement in that, in regards to the disc golf course?
I think the way it was left, Daryl, was you were gonna come back to the town and be put on the agenda, that was in the spring when Charlene and I met with, with you and Clayton, and I haven't heard from you since. But if you're asking, the board's asking me now if I would recommend you continue with sponsorships, I would say no. Charlene and I also had a meeting with, um, Commissioner Saunders and Clayton, and it's my understanding, Charlene, please correct me if I'm wrong, they indicated that they were not in need of sponsorships and were not asking the town to do sponsorships. Certainly not the way I would have wanted to have this conversation with the board, but that's my answer.
Right.
I know, I was just curious of the process.
And I think, yes, informally, I had heard discussions of, you know, we do wanna support disc golf and there are more efficient ways than the, you know, donations are great, but they take a decent amount of time and effort, where I think as taxpayers, we're all willing to support it. So maybe we could look at what we could put into the budget. So all things to, to do down the, down the road, but touch it, you know, with the money.
It's the money.
We always open every idea. I have one more item before we look for that last motion and then I wanted to introduce my girlfriend, this is Chana back here in the back. Stay until the very end, so, the board, so. Just meet everybody. So hopefully you have a chance to say hi before we get out of here. So, thanks for coming. Last motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned.